All right, I'll go ahead and talk to the Senate. Come on, please stand with me. Give me some watch and give some word of prayer.
Sure, let's pray. Father, we thank you once again for the time that we have here to do the business of the District Board. And I pray that you will continue to be with our administrators and our principals and our teachers as they go through each and every day. Lord, continue to keep us safe and watch over us and help us as a board here tonight and in the future to make the best decisions that would be good for our kids and for our faculty and staff and for our community. And we thank you for all that you do for us and we just pray that you'll be with us tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Clippert, anybody sign up for him before? Before I give you just a second. Ms. Flowers' mother passed away here recently and there was a letter left here on my desk that I was asked to read, so I'd like to read this for just a second if y'all don't mind. HSC Board of Trustees, thank you all so much for the beautiful plant and all the many prayers that have gone up for our family. Your thought has meant so much to us. We appreciate you and our very thankful Sandy David and family. So he wanted me to read that, so we need to continue to praise him as they go through the loss of her mother. All right, I will move us to three, educational spotlight.
We had a recognition who was not able to attend today, but we are going to honor this state cross-country runner in December?
Yes, he had to work tonight.
He had to work, okay. Mr. Gaines, so we will recognize him in December and we have some awesome kiddos here for this intermediate school. They are ready to hear. Hello. So we have some fourth grade students here. They are going to talk, they've been learning in Bluebonnet about Middle Ages and they are going to talk to you about the feudal system. Dylan, you want to go ahead and tell them about that?
So the feudal system is where the lower people in the town, so like the farmers and stuff, they, the kings at the top exchanged their protection to the lower people in exchange for the lower people's loyalty.
There you go.
Very good.
And they had to write a paper. It was an opinion paper over who they wanted to be in the feudal system. You want to tell them your choices?
Our choices were if we wanted to be a sheriff, which is like a farmer, a craftsman, a craftsman, a monk, a nun, or a knight.
So do we get to hear what you want to be?
I chose to be a knight.
I chose to be a craftsman.
I chose to be a monk.
I chose to be a knight.
I chose to be a knight.
So those of you who are knights, why did you choose to be a knight?
Because they get to run on horseback.
What about you, Derek?
Because they're really powerful and they can take over the world.
Dylan, what about the monk? I'm curious. Why the monk?
Because they're Christian and they didn't care.
Claire, why don't you go be a craftsman?
So I would like to be a craftsman because you can make like fancy cool stuff like furniture, giant windows, or paper.
And then I chose to be a knight because you can make a lot of money by living and...
You got to repeat that.
That's not called making money, that's called stealing. Goodness, on the effort for her.
That's hilarious.
It's a pleasure, politics.
Oh, that is great. Hey guys, can, I'm sorry, I should have did this beforehand. Can you introduce yourselves?
I'm Dylan.
I'm Clara.
I'm Peyton.
I'm Beasley.
I'm Drew.
So I have a question about Bluebonnet. Are you, have you ever heard of the feudal system before you started reading about this in fourth grade?
Uh, no.
No.
Never.
That was literally foreign to you. So are you learning a lot of different topics that are interesting? What are y'all working on now, next?
Well, the American Revolution, yes. We started it today.
Excellent. So they're pretty, they're pretty interesting topics that you're learning on. So you're learning about history, but you're learning about reading and writing at the same time.
I know it's very difficult to get up here and talk in front of a bunch of people, but y'all did a fantastic job. Y'all did a great job. I'm sure did. You want to say something else?
Any other questions? If y'all have any questions, they're good to give. I told them to be prepared for questions. What has been your favorite unit thus far?
Uh, the Middle Ages.
Okay, well, everyone gets a chance. Okay, go ahead.
I think either the Middle Ages or like our first unit, we learned about polio and I think that was really cool.
Oh, interesting. What was yours?
Uh, exact same as Dylan.
Exact same?
Middle Ages.
Middle Ages?
Polio.
Interesting.
Middle Ages.
Very good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you all for coming. You did a great job.
Turn around. Turn around this way.
Just by the stem. Thank you, Ms. Board. That was great to kind of introduce Bluebonnet. Yeah, that was really fun. On that note of the education spotlight, there's, they do have a lot of unique and interesting topics that the kids are learning about throughout this curriculum. So we've been impressed with the high level of content. Even Dr. Thornton saw, just kind of on a side note, they were doing a tour with our region center and they came and it was first grade and they called it the what system? Mr. Stock would like this. How did she say it?
Circulatory.
It was the circulatory system. And they were learning in first grade all about the circulatory and the circle.
Circulatory.
Yeah, and so they really have stretched them. So they're not kidding when they're learning about some high level content.
Okay, might I say, also that day we went from first through third grade, first grade classes, second and third, and all those students were all doing the human body systems and at different levels. And some were just wrapping up, some were in the middle of the reading process, some were doing different activities, but they were all studying the same thing. And it was really nice to hear circulatory, but she could get up and point and she knew the other body systems, so it was great to hear and nice to see how all those grade levels were working on the same thing.
We're pushing, we're pushing kids, that's for sure. They're learning. They are doing great. That's it?
Okay. I will move us to four, consent agenda. Anything, Mr. Clippert, on consent agenda?
Unless y'all have specific questions about the question.
Anybody have any questions or any further discussion of consent agenda? I will entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Have the motion.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Robertson, Holly Payton. Motion carried. I'll move us to five, action discussion items, A, consideration action of any more targeted improvement plan.
So I'm going to share with you A actually through E, well, no, through D. A through D are some different pieces of information that we wanted to share. Some need in action, some do not, and we, I'm not even going to say we. Dr. Thornton put a lot of this on slides, so we didn't have to copy. So somewhat, when it warms up behind you, you're going to see a little bit of information on each of these. The targeted improvement plan is in regard to the elementary school. So while it's warming up, it is, oh, here it is, it's behind you. So it's information about the elementary school and the tip plan that we've had to create for the last few years. I'll let you go. Okay.
So tonight, this is our targeted improvement plan hearing, public hearing, and we're going to talk a little bit about the elementary school's accountability and their improvement history, school improvement history. When you look back to, there was, when you look back all the way to 2019, you can see that the school was rated a C, a low C of a 71, all the way to a 79 in 22. 23 was down to an F and 24 was at a 70 at a C. But all of those years, we were either in comprehensive support or targeted support and improvement. So we've been at, we've been in school improvement at the elementary campus since 2019. Even in the years 20 and 21, when we weren't rated because of COVID and the testing process, we were still having to go through the school improvement process because the school had left 19 being under school improvement process. So they continued that. In 2025, even though we went from a C to a D, we made remarkable improvement and so we came out of school improvement. So this year Huntington Elementary is not in school improvement.
And I want to interrupt really quickly. Remember 2025 is where they made some changes in accountability? So you'll get to, so that is why even though we made improvement, that letter grade looks different because it's the way they calculate. But anyway, we...
But during those years, we were in school improvement because we were in the bottom 5% of our school comparability group, which is a group, a list of about 50 elementary schools that are similar to us in economically disadvantaged numbers and size. Do you mind if I say that? Will we talk about our...
Yes.
The biggest difference in us and most of those schools is that we are a K through three, they're K through five. They have the advantage of using academic growth in their accountability numbers. Our elementary school doesn't have growth. They can't show growth because they're only tested at the third grade level. There is no growth here to look at. So our accountability scores are dependent on only star performance.
Passing rate.
Period, that's it. Did you pass, did you not, did you make needs or masters? So a lot, I'm going to say many schools in the state depend on academic growth to boost their scores because either academic growth or star performance counts for 70% of your accountability rating. Where most schools show more of the academic growth than they do on performance. But we don't have that luxury at our elementary. So just keep that in mind. So there's where we scored a D because we had no growth to show that measure. Is it that simple? Okay. So after saying that, looking at domain three, closing the gaps is where we start to look at subpopulations and how they perform. And the subpops that we noticed needed the most improvement were the subpop, doesn't sound like it's a subpopulation, but all student groups. And then separated out the white student group and the high focus group. Those are our three highest needs. High focus is your economically disadvantaged, emergent bilingual, special education, and highly mobile, often divided into one group. Highly mobile are fostered care children, homeless children, and migrant children, which we don't have any migrant. Okay? So those are the groups we're looking at. In 2425, when we were still in school improvement and working towards coming out, the things that the district did to help improve that campus were appoint new campus leadership. When we asked, Shannon Wimmer became our principal. We implemented Bluebonnet learning math curriculum. And we took advantage of the ESF grant, which is a two-year grant. And that comes with coaching on the materials and internalization process through Region Seven, leadership coaching and teacher support and teacher professional development. The results were, the results were that although the campus was rated a D, we did make improvement, so the state removed the label of school improvement from our campus. So although the school is no longer in improvement or comprehensive improvement needed, we still have to write a tip plan because we're using the ESF grant. So that's, tonight is a requirement of the grant, not because we're in school improvement. Yes, Tom?
Are we no longer in that improvement support or comprehensive support improvement needed because we are no longer in the bottom 5%? Or have we actually shown?
We are still in the bottom 5%, but we've shown improvement to the point that the state has removed that label for us. So it wasn't just a little bit of improvement, it was enough improvement. Again, even though the scoring changed and we're now a D, but it was still enough improvement that they took that label.
Had it not changed...
Because I don't understand how we showed improvement. We've lost four number points.
Yeah.
I get it, they may have changed the way that it scored.
The way that it scored.
But are they not still basing this comprehensive support improvement on your number in your letter grade? I don't understand how we go backwards and move forward and eliminate this deal.
It's, it's...
I understand what you're saying.
And I get it, some of that stuff's going to be set by the state that you may not have an explanation for because...
Yeah, it is set by the state and it is unfortunately...
This doesn't present well by the numbers to say we're away from it.
Sure, sure. Correct.
When you look at closing the gaps, the domain three, that's where you can see a lot of the improvement, where we scored higher, considerably higher in math and reading scores across the board. But in some of our subpops made great gains. But just looking at the total score altogether, again, because we don't have a growth measure, it made it lower. And so we didn't, we don't see that on the paper, like you're saying, but it didn't, we did make improvement.
So how do we, how can we connect fourth and fifth grade to this?
So I've done some investigation and...
We have a move theory.
I'm sorry?
We have a move theory. Or on paper.
Yep. So we've talked about some physical, whether the need to be a physical move or whether they, paper, meaning, so there's, I've researched kind of all of this. I'm glad it's come up because...
We can organize this however we want as a district, right?
Correct. So however, there are, so what I learned, number one, I got with our small group and learned about the facilities and the way that they were instructed and things such as that. And I'm recognizing that a physical move is probably not beneficial based on, actually, all is based on toilets. I'm just going to be honest with you. There's so much plumbing issues to try to move littles over to a fourth and fifth grade campus that is not situated that way and to have little potties in where big kids would be, like it's all plumbing and it would be so much to fix that to make it accommodate. But what I did learn, and there is steps to it, but there is an application process through Ask Ted, Texas Education Directory, Ask Ted, and we can apply to change our grade span configuration under a school number. The application process starts in March. This is what's a little bit aggravating. This is why I thought, I just tried to process. They said our decision will be made by October and I thought, well, that doesn't help. Like we're into another school year. And I don't have an answer for that. That was what I got from the state. However, there are a few consequences. There are benefits and then there are a few consequences that I have to clarify with. The budgeting aspect would look different and unique. And so we have got to figure out what, how that budget would look like because we would still need administration on two physical sites, right? We still need, because it is two physical sites, I thought we were going to lose safety money, but because it is two physical sites, they say you won't lose safety money, okay? Even if it's under one number. So there's a few areas that I'm still investigating in the how to do it. Learned again, we have till March to consider this, but it would make a difference if we had K through five campus, what was going to be their rating? We did the what if.
They would either have been a high C or a low B.
They would have been a high C or B.
As a campus, as a K five campus, that's what their rating would have been. We had Chrissy Haney from Region Seven. We had her take our data and try to calculate that. And she said, you know, she couldn't give me a specific number. She said this is where, she landed at a low, at a low B, but she said a few other factors in there that I don't have access to. It could have even been a high C.
But regardless, it would have been wildly different. You mean they have a separate...
Well, I don't know about that. Our comparability groups aren't just in the county. It's a group of 40. I said 50 earlier, it's 40. But we have schools from Canyon ISD, Brassport ISD, Viner, Coesackana. So it's all over the state, schools that are just comparable to us. But it doesn't take into the account that, doesn't take into account that we're a K three and they're K five.
Because they're just comparable through enrollment.
Sure.
I've got a question.
Sure, you're great.
Got a comment. That's all. I'm going to give it time, let the wind blow. That's going to change anyway because it's the state. That stuff drives me crazy.
I know, I know.
My question is, are our kids at the point where they're reading, and they're writing, and they're learning their math, and are they learning in the classroom?
They are learning in the classroom?
That's what matters to me.
We have, we've adopted Bluebonnet. That's kind of what I was asking the kids about. It is extremely high level. So is there going to be a little bit of implementation? There is because it's, the expectations have increased greatly for the kids. They have no choice. It is a high level curriculum. They're working hard. Yes, if you would take a tour and read what's on the walls, it would make you feel good because what they're learning, how they're... because what they're learning, how they're able to speak about their topics. It's extremely high level. I don't know if you have any other comments?
No, I agree with what you just said.
Yeah.
I mean, we're seeing some gaps that maybe we didn't see prior to in a less strict.
Yeah, and I guess my, my, my point is, and it's just me, because I was here when we voted to do Bluebonnet. I've heard the good, the bad, and everything else, listening to that. But it still gets back to, I get aggravated and y'all have to do that. So it's okay for me to get aggravated because I don't have to. About all of those numbers, when it gets down to can our kids do the work? And our teachers have what they need to teach our kids to do the work.
Let's turn it over to principals. Like how do you feel like your teachers are supported instructionally, resources, all of that?
Resources, well, it comes with everything. It is so scripted that I think, especially at the younger age where, I was a kindergarten teacher for ten years. I taught second and I taught fourth. We want to do the fun things to bring our kids in and call them our own. And I think that does kind of take a little bit of that away from teachers. They're having to navigate around that to keep, I wanna say like ownership of their classroom while being really dedicated to the curriculum. And it's one of those trust the process. Like what we have to trust what we have adopted, what is put in front of us. We have to use it with fidelity to see if it works. It is hard. It's a lot. The internalization process is, it's intense. It is, it is, oh, it's scripted, but it is a lot of work. They, the teachers have to go through every lesson. They have to take every test before the kids take it to see what exactly the misconceptions are gonna be and how to teach through those. They have to go through and annotate and decide they're gonna struggle with this. So it says I need to give it five minutes, but I feel like I need to give it ten. So I'm gonna have to take a little bit back from over here. They have to dive into curriculum. Like I don't ever remember diving into curriculum because I'm diving into. Materials, it is, we're, we have the budget to get everything we need for ELA. They have some, some stuff coming up, but they moved a unit back because there were a whole lot of projects and a whole lot of stuff to order. We have everything we need for math. Walking in and seeing these kids talk about the Middle Ages feudal system and, and in math. And they are, math is fun. Math is one of those things where they, like it's hard. If you're, if you're a reader and not a math kid, math is hard and you're gonna buck it. But this breaks it down in such a way that it's like, man, if I wasn't a math kid, I'm like, if I learned math like this, I might have been a math kid, you know?
So to answer your question, I believe that we're gonna see great games.
Just from, like I'm using it right now.
That's a good point.
Literally.
And so from somebody that's used lots of different curriculums, like a lot of the work I feel like I did as an instructional coach at one point in my career, like the, that stuff is built into the curriculum. So it's nice to be able to have it all laid out there, especially for new teachers who don't know like the best way to ask a question to get to something. It's there for you. All they have to figure out is where am I plugging this in at? So I think some of like the, the experience work that has to come in to play, it's kind of built in for you. So where sometimes you would see veteran teachers being able to like, how do they dig that deep? Well, those questions are made for those teachers already. And I think the disparity between teachers from classroom to classroom has helped with that because they, they all have that information there for them.
I think they'll say to me uncomfortable and change things. I like that.
Yep.
I do that in my business.
Yep, they're uncomfortable a little.
I just, I wanna make sure that our kids are like, that's all.
It, it appears that way and when we again have to see the process through and it takes, you know, to make a change, it takes a few years. So I do see great games.
Is it scripted to the point where it takes the creativity away from the teacher that does have these ideas to reach these kids that maybe not understand it the way the script is written first time through to grab this child and circle back with them so they can actually grasp it? Because y'all all know, if you've done this for a while, they don't all learn the same.
Right. And I don't, so I think there's still some room in there for it. Like the lesson I taught today, we brought in a lot of stuff and we're able to talk about, like the main problem we were talking about today. It had a, was a scattered plot all about kids learning to, it took a brick and mortar bookstore and talked about the linear regression of the data from kids buying a hard copy book and how the trend was going negative direction. So they talked about why is that happening? Well, they, they got to the depth of, well, number one, twenty twenty hit nineteen twenty and stores shut down. People moved to more Kindle books and that kind of stuff. So they were even able to talk through the whole process of why did they even see it? Not to mention the math and data side of it. That part wasn't even scripted in. They just, we went with the conversation so they could really think through. This is real math that I use every day. These are real things that people look at.
You know, another example is the, we were talking about us, Region Seven not being on campus when the students were working on the human body system unit. And when we went into third grade classrooms, when we went into all the reading classrooms, none of them were doing the same thing. They were on the same unit and I was hearing the same vocabulary, same wording, but nobody had the same thing going on in the classroom at the same time. But if this, but on the other side of that, Mr. Sen, I would also say for a brand new teacher that really doesn't know how to put that creativity in yet, that script is great to have. And then they're gonna learn the creativity and how to put their own voice and their own personality into it as they grow, so.
Great conversation.
Yeah.
Love it, love it, love it, love it. Thank you guys.
So that was the results of twenty four.
Okay.
Right, clicker stop.
Do you?
And so moving forward for twenty five, twenty six, oh, that was the action steps. So action steps for twenty five, twenty six is we've been committing the reading portion of Bluebonnet learning for K through three, actually K through five, but K through three at elementary. And we're continuing in the second year of the Effective Schools Framework Grant. So the same things, they'll continue the coaching on materials and internalization and also include now the feedback and observation, all with Region Seven. We'll have more leadership, coaching, and teacher support. You got any further questions about?
Does it have to be approved? Approved the action?
It's just a hearing.
So no action taken?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not on the targeted improvement plan?
I was sort of discussing. Okay, so the campus improvement.
What about the campus improvement plan?
We're about to do that one.
Okay. I'll move us to be in consideration action. If you need upon the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six campus improvement plan.
Does, does that require?
Well, I just said, does it have to?
No, it doesn't require. It has to be a public hearing.
It says consideration and action, so we're not gonna take it. We just consider.
How about we approve it in, in the, in your, let's go back to any if you don't mind.
Make a motion to approve the targeted improvement plan that's presented.
I have a motion. I have a second, but Mr. Watson, all in favor?
Motion carried.
I'll move us to consideration action. Continue upon the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six campus improvement plan.
Okay, so we provided copies of all the campus improvement plans for you, I believe at the end of last week maybe. And I'm just gonna hit kind of by goal, some performance objectives. So looking at Goal One for the district, which are, these are the district board approved goals. Goal One talks about high quality curriculum for our students in the classroom. Go ahead, next one, one more. Basically, across the district, you're looking at campuses who are looking to, working to increase the performance level of students by five percent across all grade levels, all subject areas that are tested, and all subpopulations. In Goal Two, which deals with recruiting and retaining high quality instructional staff, all your campuses are looking at providing, are working with teachers to develop personalized professional goals and then working with those teachers to provide support to reach those goals by the end of the school year. And they're also looking at teachers and administrators will participate in high quality research-based staff development throughout the school year. Okay? Goal Three deals with ensuring fiscal accountability. And all of the campuses all have strategies, performance objectives and strategies written about monitoring their program budgets better, making sure that they're making, they're ensuring that their campus budgets are staying within that budgeted area and not going over. And also that they're, most of them have talked about PO approval process, making sure that everything that they're funding is at the benefit of student achievement. Goal Four is dealing with maintaining existing facilities. And all the campuses have performance objectives about maintaining the interior or exterior of their, of their facilities to the highest degree of safety, security, and cleanliness. Goal Five deals with promoting partnerships and all the campuses have strategies about building better communication between school and home and also increasing parental involvement. And then Goal Six deals with the police department. And the campuses to support that goal have written performance objectives about collaborating with their SRO, participating in coordinated school health programs, and also implementing an comprehensive school council program. And that's all that campus improvement plans. And then we do an action.
Quick.
Any questions?
Questions?
Anybody? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I can vote to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six campus improvement plans that is presented.
A motion by Mr. Sen, a second, a second by Mr. Sap, all in favor? Motion carried. I'll move us to E, discussion only. LSO four grants.
Perfect. And we'll go ahead and start this. Real quickly too, on those campus improvement plans, those will all be posted on our website for everybody to be able to see from district to all campus levels. You'll be able to, to read those strategies. The Lasso four grant is a new instructional grant that is being offered by the state. It's actually gone through Lasso, Lasso one, two, and we're at three, and now we're in four. And the purpose of this is, this is how we're gonna get funds to handle the instructional side. Lots of state money is now going through grants. And this is the way that we're going to get those. Been encouraged by our region center to apply for these. We have identified, we just wanted to share these with you. We've identified three main areas that we're going to apply for. I'm gonna give you the overall and then Robin will flip it over to, let's do the first one. If you could flip the screen to the first one. It is called the LIFT. We're gonna apply for Leadership and Instructional Foundations LIFT. These are ours, right? These are all the ones, sorry. Yeah. These are the LIFT. And then we have school improvement PLCs and strategic, or sorry, school improvement curriculum, instructional support. Most of what we're doing already on our campuses fall under this. This provides the funding for materials and all the other ways that we wanna use it. That's the LIFT. And, well, I'll have you kind of review it again too. We're talking about residencies. The residencies, the Texas Strategic Staffing Residencies is the way to earn your certification. But that's through the region centers? Am I saying that one right? That's the region centers. The PREP, Grow Your Own, those are gonna be through a university. And we're looking to get our paraprofessionals, anyone that wants to become a teacher. That's what this PREP is for, is to take a paraprofessional. We have one at the elementary definitely, are you starting the program? Wanting to become a teacher and that's the support for that is the PREP program. So we'll go forward just a little bit, the next one. That's the LIFT. Anything that you wanted to share, Robin, on the LIFT?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so the LIFT and the LIFT PLC, since we'll no longer have the Effective School Frameworks written, that'll kind of be a continuation. Like she's saying, it's already the work we're doing, but this will be where we fund that work from moving forward since we won't have ESF.
That's the learning, next one. The Strategic Staffing for residencies, if we get this, we're applying, but that doesn't mean we'll see what funds we get. Implement and sustain high quality and paid teacher residencies to address teacher needs within the district. Everybody is short on teachers. And these are, there's, the state's trying to funnel money into ways to help pay for residencies and or grow our own as well. Here's your Grow Your Own pipeline. And then our provider would be SFA, where we would work through them. And then mentorship, we liked this one because we already have a mentor program, self-developed. But this is more programmatic and it's, than these funds to help pay the mentor stipends as well. So much of this is just a formalized process of things we're already doing. Any, any other comments?
I did wanna go back to the PREP residencies, both the strategic, the Texas Strategic Staffing and the residency program through PREP. Both of those are paying student teachers. So a lot of times when you're finishing your degree, and several of you have wives in education and you know that, they have to do their student teaching cycle, semester, and it's not paid. And it's all day. So you really don't have a job or else you're working all night. This pays them to be a student teacher. So it's kind of support for them while they're trying to finish up. And it's support for us because we're gonna grow those teachers on our campus and try to keep them here with us. So they'll be placed by SFA or the ones being placed by Region Seven, depending on the grant or allotment we get.
So what, we're gonna apply. It's a, literally check the boxes for all, we're checking these boxes. There is a formula the state has for determining prioritization. I will giggle. I've been giggling as I go to meetings internally. If you're on a four-day calendar, just announcing, anyone watching, if anyone's on a four-day calendar, they don't qualify for this. You have to be here at least one hundred and sixty-five school days. If you're less than one hundred and sixty-five school days, which is typically a four-day calendar, they drop to the bottom. So it's, the state is indirectly not approving those, those calendars. So they're having to make adjustments. Anyway, we fit the bill for so much and I'm excited to see what, what funds we get from these programs. So, great job. Any questions about that? Okay. Library, oh, go on, sorry, you go ahead.
E, consideration action, if you need upon approval of library material purchases.
So in Senate Bill thirteen, this is a practice that we've always done. We've just never had to put it in front of the board. In the summer, we decided, I think it was in August, we decided we would not have a library council composed of parents, board members, all of the things that we could run our school as we have been. However, one of the caveats of Senate Bill thirteen was to have the board rec, or approve our lists of material purchases. So we have, have that uploaded to Board Book. We will, well, once they become part of our library system, every title of every book that we have is in Fallout. That's our library system, which is accessible on the website. And what else was I gonna say about that, to be honest with you? Oh, the lists. The lists come from multiple sources. There's a Bluebonnet Reader Program, I think, yeah, a few forward. Oh, how weird. Oh, well, we typed it, but that's, okay, sorry, there it is. There it is. Anyway, Bluebonnet Awards, those are a particular books that kids read and then they vote on what they like the best. Anyway, those are on the list of, we have hundreds of titles that we need to purchase. Sometimes teacher individually says, hey, we're working on this unit. We, we don't have enough books in the library for biographies or whatever. We added, and I'm just gonna assume and make this connection. We added a second health science teacher at the high school. And a lot of the high school titles were all about health. So they were interested in that. There are some series, graphic novel series that our kids love. And when they come out with new books, they just wanna order them, so. Do you guys have any questions on that? I probably will have this nearly every meeting from this point forward.
So if we ended up with a book, and we don't ever know because there's so many, it's happened to us before.
Right.
It's really not probably what we need, we can take that book out.
Yes, there is a process. We actually have, it's all lined out in, I actually have a whole process of a challenge and how we can remove that, yes. That is me actually developing a committee to review that and doing the safeguards.
That's what all that stuff say, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, we have safeguards that are in place that if there is something that slipped through or was unbeknownst to us, for whatever reason, we have a challenge process, absolutely. Yep. For sure.
Any further questions or comments?
It's a good question. And we do need to vote on this.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Library material purchases?
I make a motion to approve library material purchases. For example, thirteen labeled library books two in Board Book.
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carried. I'll move us to E, consideration action, if you need upon donations for the integral winner classic tournament.
So we got more donations, but Ms. Kennedy need to share where some of those are.
Five hundred from Tall.
Five hundred from Tallpines and Huntington Dental, and then we have the thirty-five hundred from Integra.
Any further questions about the donations? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the donations for the Integra Winter Classic Tournament.
I have a motion. Second. I have a second by Mr. Robertson, all in favor? Motion carried, I'll move us to F, discussion only, campuses, special services, and technology.
I'm going to go backwards, um, I'm going to do technology, special services on the campuses. Uh, um, Ms. Whitmore, um, Dr. Thornton's going to speak on behalf of Ms. Whitmore, who's in a course, a class, uh, that she's attending, this is her last class, I believe. I believe it's one of her last classes on Monday night, so, um, that was, that's why she's going to speak on behalf of that. So we'll go ahead and start with technology. Tim, did Jeff, uh, I'm sorry, he's speaking on behalf of.
Um, technology is kind of in that time where it's really just fixing, uh, things that come up, um, no, no issues, nothing. There's a few things with the website we're continuing to work through, but otherwise they're taking tickets and fixing Chromebooks and all those good things, so that's all he had to report.
How's he doing?
He's back today, he's back today.
Yeah, he's, um, it was a long day for him, but he's, uh.
That's why he's not here tonight.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's making some improvements, so.
So we're really happy for Mr. Barrett, who came through and.
For sure.
Is doing all things right.
Let him know we asked about it, can catch him.
Thank you, special services.
All right, in an effort to continue to refine, uh, the practice and implementation of policies and procedures throughout our department and the district, uh, Region Seven came to visit our department as a courtesy and, uh, looked through, uh, some folders that we'd had, they reviewed some folders during that morning. That afternoon gave us some guidance on some difficult arts that we have experienced and just some suggestions of some way to implement these practices as we go forward. Uh, gave us a chance to ask questions, which was very beneficial for our department as a whole. Uh, the audit process that began close to a years ago i- is in final review, thank goodness. Uh, waiting on a message from T E A to be officially complete with that process. Uh, we will do it again in another six years, so. Um, now that the audit process has came to an end, uh, it's my goal to be on campuses more at various times weekly, being able to observe students, be with staff, and, uh, just be a more visible support for teachers, students, and administrators. Uh, right now, our year-to-date total so far are forty initial evaluations with six waiting on parental consent to be given, forty-five reevaluations and forty-five reads, which are reviews of existing educational data, which happen on non-reeval years. And as always, we're working towards our ultimate goal of doing what's best for our students and giving them what they need to be successful.
Thanks, thank you so much, Mr. Wisnaw. There's, it's, uh, lots of, I've encouraged him to be in and around all of those. You solve lots of problems when you're on campus and you're seeing them firsthand, so he's working it and solving them daily, so we appreciate that work. Uh, okay, campuses, let's start, high school, middle, intermediate, and then Dr. Thornton's going to speak on behalf of, um, Shane High School.
I go, Greg.
I know you say that all the time. Specificity, a little bit, maybe a little bit.
Just finished C V As, we have our, uh, winner, our, uh, retest, E L C retesting coming up, uh, the week we get back from Thanksgiving. Basketball season. Grinch, Candy Cane Lane.
All the things, and, and I know he's not speaking about, because it was somewhat of a district thing, but really it was mostly a high school thing. That veterans program was, uh, hands down the best program I think I've ever seen. And so, uh, thank you, Shane, for your staff.
Mr. Stover, what, what's your, uh, because I've asked some of the kids, I asked some of the basketball, the whole deal with cell phone policy. Tell me what you're hearing and what you're seeing and.
I think it's great. Um, I'm not ignorant in the sense of that kids aren't using them on campus at some point. Um, we're not going into the restroom stalls and seeing if kids are having their phone out in the restroom stalls. Uh, but as far as hallways, classrooms, really when it matters, they're just not using it.
They seem to be talking more lunch, having conversations like they should do.
Lunchroom is, the lunchroom in the commons area is loud.
I think it would probably do him some benefits to sit down in the restroom stall, tell him, explain to him how they check out a class. I don't think Ben, uh, he saw that whenever we did our tours.
I call my computer.
Yes, sir.
So we're, we have a, a computer program where kids have to, uh, it's an old school hall pass where you sign out and give, you know, each teacher sign it, it's all digital now. So the kid goes online and does a, a pass, going to the restroom or whatever, it does a countdown, it gives us a, like, I can pull up the log from today and tell you every kid that checked out a class in the restroom, so. So he knows if they ticked.
How long, how long they would go. Yeah, they're on their phone, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that because if you read about it, what schools have done and the research is showing, kids are having conversations, they're starting to talk more, they don't feel like they have to have it. And so, and I know you do everything you can to enforce it.
We're enforcing it, I'm not saying that we're, I mean, we've.
Yeah.
We've had, I wouldn't say a lot, but I mean, we've had several, I think we had the data of the last meeting that we had, it was a couple ago.
Yeah, I just, and, and you won't, because you do a good job of that. I just would never want us to get lax. We got it going, it's rolling, let's just keep on.
And I gotta tell you, the kids are really a proponent of it now, Ben, uh, with Mr. Watson, excuse me, uh, they are so excited. I had a, a, a young lady tell me that, oh, it's so nice not to deal with all of that drama. And so like, in their own way, they are so happy not to have it. If you walk into, um, the commons or into the library at any point, old school, card castles, they're building them. I've got pictures of them at Maker Stations with the Legos, they're in high school. They have learned checkers, I'm not going to say, they might have also learned a little poker, maybe just a little. Um, they're playing games and it's pretty cool.
Thank y'all for the words of that.
It's really, it's really fun to see them, sorry to sabotage that because it's really cool. Okay, middle school.
Uh, it's going good, uh, C V As, we've got more tomorrow and Wednesday and that'll kind of finish us up for this round. Basketball in full force, um, and this Friday, several of you, thank you, are helping us out with our Angel Tree fundraiser. Um, I hope we can all walk next Monday.
Hey, uh, we've got to go ahead and make sure it's, if it's on, it's on YouTube. We've got to make sure we get Mr. Wisnaw on the roster, um, so let's get that done right now. Are we going to need help under the goal, that's our big.
I checked, they have two X jerseys, will it?
You're on, Chris, you can't say no.
I already told Hayes Stover, he better wear both new breaks, I'm racking both his legs.
I'm only going in one time.
So now we got to explain what's happening, now, just for the, for our viewers online.
There's been a lot of smack talk going on between, you know.
So, so who's playing for our Loveken newspaper, so you can know.
So, um, we're doing an Angel Tree fundraiser, um, and we're doing a staff versus student game.
Basketball game, staff versus students. Uh, and maybe board, board.
Yeah, and we've got some extra people that are helping us out, so our board's coming to, I guess you're all, are you all just playing or you'll also be the cheerleader, anybody?
Well, I'm supposed to play.
Okay, just playing basketball.
Last time I was on the floor playing basketball, I fell off a donkey, so I don't, I'm not sure.
Are you going to be the cheerleader or get you some fun?
I'll get you.
So come on out, come on out if you're here listening to the staff versus student fundraiser, that's great, thank you. Intermediate.
Um, we did our reading and science C V As last week, we are doing our math C V A tomorrow and then we have our Thanksgiving lunch with a loved one on Wednesday, so busy week, uh, hoping attendance stays up with all the things going on. Um, but yeah, perfect.
Um, I'll sabotage this a little bit, I know Friday is elementary's Thanksgiving, uh, lunch and then.
Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday is elementary's Thanksgiving lunch and I've heard it's a really grand deal with hundreds that show, so I'm interested to visit first time. Anything else for elementary that is on your list?
Yeah, cool.
So, they took C V As last week, uh, we have one more C V A this week, I believe on Wednesday. Uh, looking at the data we've already gotten from last week, you can see our score's improving, uh, so we are seeing gains over last year's C V A one. Uh, starting out, um, after Thanksgiving break, they'll be doing Teeks boot camps, so based on the C V A data, they're going to be breaking up and doing some remediation. Um, not, let me rephrase that, it's not just remediation, it's those students who just failed, we're looking at pushing our meets and masters scores up. So they're looking at those students as well, so accelerating those and some remediation for students who weren't doing as well on grade level. Um. Oh, and Miss Whitmore, what did you know, she's in class, she's not just skipping? I'm not going to tell you what her current topic is, it is.
No.
She's working towards a second master, I believe. Um, she is in history.
History.
It's in history.
Tonight is on the Manson murders. She said, I'm currently locking doors.
So, yeah, she's got a really interesting violence history class.
Prime in America.
Prime in America. Yes. Uh, Mr. Neil, last but not least.
Pride is going well, uh, we've had, I believe, ten graduates this year, a couple of which are hoping for a successful STAR test next month so they can get their diploma. Uh, appreciate our teachers, Ms. Arnold, who was right here tonight with us for a little while, and Ms. Dickerson, they're doing a great job, very patient. Uh, you know, every diploma is hard earned, but as you know, many of our pride kids have overcome some pretty tremendous obstacles. Um, I see them, you know, working sometimes until ten or twelve at night and then dragging in in the mornings, trying to get their diploma and so it's, uh, it's been for the last, I guess I'm in my fifth year there, it's been a pretty unique experience, you know, to see, uh, what they do to get their diploma, so. Appreciate you guys supporting the program, uh, that's pretty much it.
And while I could say they're changing lives, I think these lives, um, were saving lives in this program, which is pretty neat.
It's awesome.
Saving, saving lives, and, and Mr. Neil does an amazing job there.
Thank you, Mr. Neil, thank you. I'll move to six superintendents to report.
Okay, um, you, there's monthly expenditures, if you have any questions or concerns, let us know about those. Attendance, our average, uh, percentage of attendance has been ninety-five percent, I've been trying to advertise those. We were last week at one point, um, I think, like, it was ninety-eight, so anyway, it was like an amazingly high. So why is that important for anyone listening? Why is that important? It's important because that's how we get funded, that's one way to get student attendance. We get paid every day that a child is in attendance, so everything that we can do, um, to, um, encourage attendance, share the importance of attendance, and that's what I, I continue to try to do with our community.
I would keep doing that in that newsletter every week.
Yeah. It's letting people know that, that's one way, we, it's taxes and attendance, um, am I right about that? Matt, I think that was, our attendance is pretty critical.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously that's a, a big component of that, but more than that, they're here and we're.
And they're learning.
They're learning when they're here, so, that's, uh, I don't, as the money guy, I want to make sure that I'm clear that we don't look at them just as dollars. You know, we're, we want them here.
But I can tell you, yeah, we want them here, for sure.
And we love them when they're here. I may not get it on them, so.
Yeah, we love them, and we need them here. And our enrollment, um, just is approximately, it is fluctuated, but about one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. And, and that number seems different because we ended the year about fifteen, sixty-ish, and so.
The good news is that our, our ADA, uh, projections that we use in our summary of finance are, I mean, we're, we're, we're where we need to be in regard to that. So it, as of right now, assuming the attendant, I mean, enrollment doesn't decline, I don't see that being a major problem. We just have to see, you know, how the attendance holds out and enrollment holds out for the second part of the year, so.
So that's, that's attendance enrollment. The rest of, um, the agenda here are dates, Thanksgiving break, that is all next week, I expect everybody to be with their families and do what they can do to rest and recoup. And December is going to be fast and furious. Um, oh, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, this is correct, all the December dates, the Grinch, the Candy Cane Lane, the Integra Classic, our board meeting is on the fifteenth and then, um, we have a band concert the next day. But I bet, um, you can open up any athletic schedule and there'll be something for you to do every single day, so. Any other questions about, um, anything? Yes, that'd be great.
All right, at this time, I'll move to seven executive sessions, here in the course of meeting, discussion, media, and all the gentleman, the board will conduct a closed meeting in the course of the Texas Open Meeting Act. Texas Government Codes, chapters five, five, one, sub-chapters, any of them, now put us into executive session.
Move us back into session. I'll move us back up to E personnel report.
I think motion approved personnel report.
I have a motion by Mr. Sin.
I have second.
I have a second by Mr. Sapp. All in favor? Motion carry. I'll now move us to ten. The adjourners.
I'll make a motion with adjourners.
Second.
Get out of there.
Second.
You better hurry.
You speak up, Charles.
All in favor? Motion carry.
Charles.
Sorry, I got tickled.
Thank you all.